Okay, it's six thirty and I will call the October meeting of the Sartell St. Stephen's School Board to order. Thank you to all of the community members that are attending in person as well as online. Uh, we appreciate your interest and engagement in our school district. Also, again, a big thank you to the City of St. Stephen for hosting our meeting this evening. The first thing on the agenda is the question of allegiance.
The United States of America and the United States of America provides fans. One nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and next on our list is approval of the agenda. A motion. By Jen, second by Emily. My favorite say aye.
Aye.
You post a name. Agenda approved. Then we move on to recognition of visitors. Donate these books that they will have the same lifespan in the library of any other book. Not longer unless they have been checked out, not lesser. The same, so again, I donated books for probably forty years. Uh, in different, in another area of the country and other situations and.
In a kindness with chalk event, uh, the week of October ninth or the thirteenth. Uh, they were taking time to decorate the school sidewalks with words and images of cheer. And they're also working on a rainbow kindness project to display in our school to continue their school life theme in the celebration of kindness. The students are also learning about community helpers and fire safety. Kittery gardeners got to go on their first field trip to the Sartell Fire Station. And it was very exciting for all of them. I vividly remember that day. Um, they're also hosting their annual fall safety night on October twenty-sixth. From five to six thirty for all Oriole students. Sartell Fire, Sartell PD, State Troopers, DNR Conservation Officers, and EMS and EMTs will all be showcased. Early learners will get to interact with community helpers and explore safety vehicles. And then there will also even be a canine demonstration this year. The, our earliest learners are also learning all about being safer strong as we all are. Uh, they're learning about what it means to be safe, respectful, and engaged each day. Been a busy month for them. Over at Pine Meadow, uh, conferences were held last week with great success. It was, we were told that it was great for kids and families to be able to celebrate their first six weeks of school, sharing their learning and some of the goals they're setting. We're on field trips, first grade went on their first field trip, um, to the triple S pumpkin patch. Learning about the life cycle of a pumpkin and we're even able to bring one home, which is exciting. And then the whole school is looking forward to seeing the Sartell High School students' performance of Elephant and Piggy on November seventeen. This is a unique opportunity thanks to the funding provided to the theater by the Sartell St. Stephen Education. Over at River View, River View staff and students had a blast participating in our homecoming events in September. I would like to make a big shout out to River View as back-to-back champs of the homecoming parade. With their camp kikiwaka you've loved this year, so great job to them. Can't wait to see what they come up with next year. The River View PTO also did a great job raising money for students to go on field trips at River View throughout the year. Um, they also had their first ever fifth grade student council elections. This is the first year that they'll have student leadership at River View and are very excited for the twenty-fourth fourth graders who will be taking part. And then on October eighteenth, staff welcomed the Jeffers Foundation back to review for some professional development. The PD's focus was on three-dimensional science instruction with a focus on elder learning for an older age. That was also included for instruction and how it connects the standards and benchmarks. Over at SMS, uh, they're having a great start to the school year. Again, October is a busy month for them. They also had excellent participation in family conferences and the ten and twelve. And would like to extend a big thank you to Patton, Patton Show and the staff at Forest Mom for providing teachers with dinner during those conferences. Language arts students were treated to a guest speaker on October twelve. Um, Mrs. Donna Keller presented on the Great Depression, kick off a novel. Uh, you can highlight that era of history. So thank you, Mrs. Keller, for sharing her insights there. Also, the sixth grade activity night scheduled for October twenty-seventh. And the fall benchmark testing has been completed. Similar to the high school, uh, middle school sports are wrapping up. Again, big thank you to all the coaches and helpers that made our sports go smoothly this year. And then just in the beginning of this month, the river, or the middle school, excuse me, began often grabbing for breakfast. So students can have breakfast even if they're right close to the start of school time. And finally, at our high school, just like the middle school, many of our fall sports are wrapping up as we begin to head into championship season for many of our activities. So good luck in their section and conference and hopefully state meets these next few weeks. The fall conferences or the fall music concerts, excuse me, were held at high school, the band, choir, orchestra, all participants were within those. Heard they were very successful, early usual. The Clue Fall Play also concluded at the beginning of the month. It was a great show and great work to everybody who participated and thanks to everybody who came out and see it. And then today, Monday, the twenty-third is also the winter sports meeting at the high school, which is happening right now. And looking ahead a little bit, Sunday, October twenty-ninth, uh, the Honor Society at the high school. Will trick or treat in Sartell neighborhoods for donations of canned food items between one and four P M. And donations may also be dropped off at the high school during throughout this week. Similarly, uh, the student council is planning their annual Thanksgiving in a box event, which will be from November sixth to the seventeenth. First blocks will be collecting food items to create Thanksgiving meals for families in the community. Community members are also encouraged to donate, but you can do that in the main office during that sixth to seventeenth of November period. And then at the high school, we're looking forward to the end of the quarter on November third. And it's crazy to think we're already a quarter of the way through high school this year and nothing about it, but thank you.
Excellent, thank. Any questions? Right. Next report we have is, um, we have Marie Pangro, our district assessment coordinator. Yeah, the cooking show.
I know, that's probably more exciting for this report. Okay, so, um, good evening Superintendent Lee and members of the board. Tonight I'm going to present on our North Star, um, ratings and our all accountability data. And then we're also going to briefly look at our district demographics as well. Um, so to start off, this is what our student demographics look like right now. We are eighty-five point three percent white. Um, back in two thousand sixteen seventeen, when I started with the school district, we were at about ninety-two percent. Um, so you can see how that shift is taking place. Um, our Hispanic population is at four point two. Asian is two point four, black is at two point eight, and then students who identify with two or more races is at four point seven. There's also a tiny, um, green sliver there that is representative of our American Indian population. That's about point six percent of our population. Um, special education, we're at sixteen point two percent of our students. Um, our special ed, again, back in two thousand sixteen seventeen, we were at about fourteen percent. Um, currently, our free and reduced lunch is at twenty-three and a half percent. Um, we saw a huge shift in this, just in how the state has changed the way in which they identify students for free and reduced lunch. Um, so that's new. Um, our English language learners were at about one point three percent. And that is representative of about fifty-six to sixty studia, students. Um, all right, so then we're going to move into the Every Student Succeeds Act and North Star. So North Star is the new, um, excellence and equity accountability system. It's dubbed North Star, um, and it was developed by the Minnesota Department of Education to align and meet requirements of the federal Every Student Succeeds Act. And the Every Student Succeeds Act replaced No Child Left Behind years ago, is what you're probably most familiar with always hearing. Um, and it's to meet the state's World's Best Workforce Law, um, which focuses on supporting districts and meeting locally determined goals. Um, the foundation of North Star's process for identification is a stage-based approach to school accountability. That uses multiple measures for evaluation and we'll talk about all those measures in a little bit. Um, so this new system reflects Minnesota's, um, commitment to equity. And an accelerated sense of urgency in confronting disparities experienced by students who have traditionally been underserved. Um, such as those students in certain racial and ethnic groups, our English learners, students in our specialized category and free and reduced lunch. Um, this approach is more holistic versus just focusing on one data point in defining a student's, um, success. So the five areas that we're going to take a look at is academic achievement, academic progress. English language proficiency, the graduation rate, and consistent attendance. Now, in order for kids to be included in the accountability calculation, there's several pieces of criteria that they have to meet. So they have to be enrolled during our accountability window and we have two different accountability windows. One is for access and our, um, English language learner students take the access test. And that window opens on, um, typically the end of January. So like last year, it happened to be January twenty-ninth. So, um, English language learner kids have to be enrolled in that date. And then, um, for M C A and M task, that's a little bit later. It's the beginning of March. Um, and then they also have to meet, um, A D M, which is that average daily membership. So if their Mars record shows that they're enrolled at least fifty percent of the school year, then they're included in this calculation. And they have to be enrolled December fifteenth. So there's several criteria that students have to meet in order to be considered in calculations. So the first one we're going to look at is academic achievement in mathematics. So at the district, we were sixty-one and a half percent. And the state was at forty-two point eight. Now, for, for accountability purposes, any student who opts out or refuses to take the test. Is included in our denominator, but only students who score and exceed standards or meet standards. So those two together means a student is proficient. Um, then those students are included in the numerator. So we had, um, for math, one thousand three hundred and seventy students that were proficient. But we had two thousand two hundred and twenty-six students that met the accountability criteria and that included a lot of students that opted out. Um, or just refused to take the test. All right, um, oh, the other thing that I want to say though, even overall over math as well, um, our academic achievement. We are ranking, um, twenty-fifth in the state out of five hundred and twenty-one schools. There are a few more schools in the state, um, but those are charter schools that are only K-two schools. And so they are not included in this calculation because students don't start taking, um, the M C A until third grade. So again, for math, we're twenty-fifth out of the five hundred and twenty-one schools. Um, in looking at reading at sixty point six, the state's at forty-seven point six. Um. Here, our numerator is, um, our numerator is one thousand three hundred and thirty-four. And our denominator was two thousand two hundred and two kids. Um, for reading, we ranked forty-seventh in the state. All right, the next measure we're going to look at is academic progress. And academic progress is based on student growth. Um, there's two separate indicate indicators. There's math, progress and reading progress. Um, and I'm going to kind of go between these two slides here. So, um, North Star, North Star uses this academic progress matrix. To look at student achievement levels from the current year and then they compare it to the most recent achievement level on record for a student. So let's say, for example, if a student was at the does not meet ca, um, category. And then the next time they took the test, they scored in the exceed standards category. They would have earned fifteen points. If a student was at partially meets and they went up to exceeds, they would have earned nine points. If a student goes backwards at all, they don't earn any points. Or like if they're at a does not need, they stay does not need, they don't earn any points. So, um. For math, we had, um, a total of one thousand five hundred and two students that earned almost four thousand points. So that's how they calculate that numerator and denominator. So does anyone have questions about how this matrix works? Students, okay. And then for reading, we had, uh, again, about fifteen hundred students that earned about thirty-two hundred points. And so that's how we got this, um, the growth index points. So still above the state and math for math and reading. All right, so the next area is progress towards English learner proficiency. And so English learners take what is called the access test. It consists of four sub-tests, reading, writing, listening, and speaking. Um, and the percentage points are based on each student's progress and meeting their personal targets on the test. So last spring, we had fifty-eight students take the access test. But only forty-six of them were included in the denominator because again, they had to meet that accountability criteria. Um, and of those forty-six, they totaled like twenty-three points. So in an essence, then that's where the fifty-one point eight percent calculation comes from. And so how they read that is they say, on a continuum from where students started to where they were supposed to get. They made it fifty-one point eight percent of the way to their target. All right, graduation rate. Um, we are at ninety-six point four percent and this is based off of the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, um, graduating class. Cause it's, this calculation is always a year behind. Um, this is an area that our high school and district is always extremely proud of. Our high school works really hard at, um, keeping track of our students and, um, making sure they're passing classes. And they're staying on top of their needing credits and getting all their credits so that they can meet graduation requirements. Um, all the kids that are missing here, we had eight students that were continuing and that's, um. Like our specialized students that can stay with us until they're twenty-one in that program. We only had one student that dropped out and then we had two students who were classified as unknown. And when that happens, it typically mean, means that those students moved out of state. Because if they just left our district and enrolled in another district, that other district would have picked them up. And they would have been included in their Mars reporting, but they just completely fell off. So we still have them attached to us, but then they're classified as an unknown. Um, and then this is our consistent attendance data. And this is also based off the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, um, data. So we're still seeing a lot of residual side effects from COVID in regards to this measurement. Um, essentially what these percentages are saying is that we still have one in five of our students that are chronically absent. And we have work to do, um, to keep our students, um, in attendance at school. Um, so this part essentially wraps up the North Star recording and our accountability. Um, and I'm going to move on to the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessment Results from last spring. Um, I'm going to talk about how you interpret the graphs, but I'm not going to let go through all of the data of every single grade. I'm just going to show it. You guys can take a moment to look at it and then at the end of your questions, you can ask questions. So, um. In explaining the graph, the blue chunk is the students that exceeded the standard. Um, and the green are students who met the standard. So those two colors together essentially means are those two groups are students who were proficient on the M C A. The yellow are students that partially met the standard and the red are students who did not meet the standard. So those two colors together mean that the students were not proficient on the M C A. So every single one of these graphs is, um, I have each grade and then it's our score next to the state's score. And then down below, I also included our numerator and our denominator. Now, this calculation is different because this does not take into consideration students who have opted out. Because this percentage looks at just students tested and the percent that were proficient of the students who tested. So here's third and fourth grade math. Fifth grade math. And again, I'm just going to kind of flip through these. And you guys had them in your packet too, so. Um, I will make mention here, um, for our eleventh grade math. We did have approximately thirteen to fourteen percent of our students that opted out in eleventh grade, um, for math. Um, every year we try to get really creative on, um, how we can best schedule our assessments. So that we can minimize the number of kids that are opting out. Because typically, the ones that we're seeing opt out are our highest performing kids. But it's because they're busy with A P classes and they're studying for all the other assessments that they have. Um, so this year again, we've gotten pretty creative on how and when we are offering the M C A. To minimize the number of kids that are opting out because it is a benefit for those kids to take the M C A. If they score high enough, um, it does get them out of remedial classwork when they go into college. Um, here's our science. Data. There's reading. Third, fourth grade, first grades, okay. Um, here's tenth grade and, um, for tenth grade reading, we had about ten and a half percent of our students opt out of that. And again, that same, every year, we try to look at that schedule again and see what's what we can do to minimize that. Um, next, we're going to look at A C T. So every year, the district offers an A C T testing day for our eleventh graders. Um, this last year, we had forty-nine students who took the test. Um, it is again offered during the school week, during the school day. Students do have to pay for it. Um, years ago, back in two thousand seventeen, eighteen, and prior to that, the state paid for it. So like all students took it, um, but now that students have to pay for it on their own. We have very, um, few students that take the test and, um, during the school day. But we still do have quite a few taking it on, uh, national test dates, which happen on Saturdays. But for, for purposes of our data here tonight, we're going to look at just how did students perform that took it during the school day as eleven graders. So, and we're going to look at English, math, science, and reading. And basically what they give us is a percent on our kids' college ready or not college ready. So for English, um, seventy-one percent of our students were college ready. Uh, reading was sixty-seven percent. Um, science was sixty-one. And math was seventy-three. And then, um. Forty-nine percent met all four benchmarks. Um, and then looking to the future, um, the world's best workforce is something that comes before the board every year as well for approval. And, um, right here is our annual report for, um, this year. This is going to be going before the, um, what used to be called the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee. Um, which has now been titled the World's Best Workforce Committee. So they have a meeting tomorrow morning. Um, and this will be presented to them at seven-thirty, um, and they will offer any suggestions or ideas that they have. Um, so once we present it to them, there will be a group of us that come back here in November and we'll present this to you guys. Um, and ask for your approval in November so that we can submit it to, um, M D E, um, by mid-December. But, um, again, basically all the goals that we have as a district, um, tie into the world's best workforce goals. Which are all listed here. So are there any questions? Yes, Emily. Um, the opting out part with the M C As, is that becoming more common in recent years that more students are opting out?
We are seeing it more in our district in the last year or two. Prior to that, we really weren't seeing it and we weren't experiencing that like metro districts were.
How much, and I know that you explained this, but just, how much is that affecting the overall academic score? But if they're opting out of that, is that offsetting our score in a negative way?
For accountability purposes, it is. And, and we're seeing the most of it happen at the high school, like our grades three through eight. We might have a handful of kids that it really isn't going to affect it. But at the high school, when we have fourteen percent of eleventh graders opting out or refusing to take the test. Or, um, ten percent of tenth graders for the M C A reading for accountability purposes, yeah, it's okay.
Can I ask a related question on that?
Yeah.
Do we have numbers from the state? Know how we compares to the statewide average of how many kids opt out of these?
I'm sure I could probably get it. I don't know off the top of my head. That's a good question. Yeah.
Do we have any feedback?
I would say we're still under, I would still say we're under in comparison to what me, I mean. In my like district assessment coordinator groups and May, the Minnesota Assessment Group, I mean, we have. Metro districts that large, large populations are opting out, so.
Is there any feedback that we're getting from families or students that are opting out about why they're doing that?
Yeah, ma, a majority of what we got last year was they just didn't want to miss class, um. And that content when they're preparing for their A P exams. So.
But in fact, that they're A P students.
They're our highest achieving.
Yeah, it probably would have affected them.
Yeah.
So with a child that is not proficient in something on one of these standardized tests, is there resources that are provided then to them?
So we do review, um, all of the data with our teachers, um, every year. And there's, um, what M D E calls a, achievement level descriptors. So they'll say like, if you're delivering content that looks like this, this would be at a does not meets level. Like this is what you need to do to deliver the content to make it look like an X T's. Um, standards level. And we review that, like, they put out a, it's called a benchmark report. And actually on November sixth, when we have our next P D day, M D E is going to be coming again and meeting with groups of teachers to review those benchmark reports. To see what strands and which areas we were low in, which benchmark we were low in and how we can maybe teach that area a little bit different. But one thing that's really difficult about the M C A test is that we don't get to see the test. And, and nobody gets to see the test, so it's, you don't even, you don't know what questions are on it. They give you like test specs to say like geometry and algebra might have anywhere from ten to fifteen questions related to that strand. Um, but you don't know exactly what it's asking relating to geometry.
With our other testing, our fast bridge, I think we did fast bridge through, what grade is that all the way through?
So we do kindergarten through eighth grade and then a select, um, population of students at the high school for fast bridge.
And that's more real-time data for us, right? As a district, we're see, like, that's three times a year.
Yep, yep, we do it fall, winter, and spring. So they take reading and math on that and they get their test results right away. Um, it's also an adaptive test, which, um, kind of shows truly where a student is at. Because if they answer a question right, um, they get a harder question. If they answer incorrect, they get an easier question, so.
So if we were to compare the data from, I know it's kind of hard beyond a grade, but let's just say from the M C As and what we're seeing versus what we would see in an overall view of the fast bridge scores. Would we see, like you say, more accurate data, but would we see the same kind of percentages? Or would we see a much more accurate, uh, depiction of success and where we're at in our, at in our schools?
Yeah, so, um, it's pretty close. It's a pretty good prediction. Um, we do know with our fast bridge data though, if a student is not at the sixty-fifth percentile nationally in fast bridge. They have a really hard time passing the M C As.
Sure.
So if they're at, like, our district-wide goal is to try to get kids to the sixty-fifth percentile nationally. Because we know that they have a greater chance of passing the M C As, sure.
So we. So we, obviously, this year are starting new elementary learn-to-read curriculum. And it's starting to be implemented, it'll be fully implemented next year. Are these the metrics we're gonna look at to determine whether that is a success in the end? Or is it a different metric that we're gonna be viewing?
So I think short term, we'll be looking at fast bridge. But I think ideally, like, common informative assessments would be the best thing to look at and what we probably should be looking at, like. That's where we need to go. We need to be looking at those assessments because it's even quicker. It's what's happening in the classroom daily after every lesson or at the end of a le- lesson or a unit. And then that data should be talked about at PLCs and. Sorry, did you have some?
Yeah, but in the end, uh, one of the reasons why we have a lead act is because we're now part of the science of reading, so the science of reading has shifted through the years. And um, I believe um states like Mississippi um adopted some new curriculum and they went from like fiftieth to like thirtieth. And so as far as they saw a huge improvement in their students. And here in Minnesota, we've been seeing a steady kind of decline with our readings course in particular. So uh, I know that um the staff or several of the staff voluntarily at um Riverview Intermediate School. Um, studied a book called um The Knowledge Gap um over the summer. I'm proud of the reading it. And basically, um, it it talks about how schools, we've been functioning and developing the skills for reading. But if you don't have the knowledge to bring, so if you don't understand five words in a particular text. You probably don't comprehend the entire passage. And so CCL layers, core knowledge, language arts, is meant to increase the knowledge level of students. While not, while also continue focusing on skills, so building knowledge in addition to skills, not just trying to build skills. And um, I think uh, we're going to be bringing a preliminary report at some point in the future as far as how are things going with that. Um, what I've heard is that it's a lot of work for staff, but we're getting kids produce a lot more in a classroom too. Is that basically what, yeah, that's what I. So and we will use these, in the end, every, every district in the state uses these metrics uh as part of this report. But we will be using them for uh personal learning communities as, as newly indicated. So how we can adjust our instruction on the fly, right? So not waiting for the end of the year, not even waiting for the three times a year that you pass.
Right, well, and this is, this data is essentially last year's data. We're waiting. Later, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you. Brett, the next report we have is the superintendent report interim superintendent. I don't have a whole lot of things to add. Um, our student report gave us a lot of great stuff. That was a really thorough, thank you. Um, I did, I can't remember if we had, if we had reported this either in a board update or in a board meeting. So if I'm reading myself from previous meetings, please excuse me, uh, but uh, thanks to Kyle uh in our technology department. Frank, Chris. All right, Frank, Chris, okay, thank you. Um, uh, he submitted a grant over, I think about two years ago to the federal government. And he was awarded, uh, Sartell was awarded a little over a million dollars uh in uh grants for our technology department. Uh, so that will help with some of our replacement. Is it one supporting?
Let's have the spotlight.
The spotlight. So, okay, that's on, all right, okay, so good. Uh, speaking of the news leader, there was um some um inaccurate information in last Friday's front page article about the uh Riverview Intermediate School. Uh, we did submit, uh, we did uh have a communication with them today and they will be correcting that coming up. Uh, shortly, um, regarding the air quality project at RIS. Um, World's Best Workforce Committee is meeting tomorrow morning. We will need to bring, as as Marie indicated, we'll need to bring that report to you in November. Cause it does need to be approved and submitted by um early to mid-December. Mid-December is the absolute deadline. It's like. Um, admin has moved forward to partner with the Lions Club. On uh something that is called the vision screening, uh, the Lions Kids Smart. Um, uh, eye screening, it's no cost to the school district. Uh, and we think it provides a great service for our students. Um, being a former uh teacher who worked with students with vision disabilities, I can't tell you how many times. Uh, I used to do vision screening out um in rural Oregon for for the schools. Uh, when kids finally get that set of glasses, they go, you mean I'm supposed to see the leaves on the end of the tree? And so we think that this is a great service provided for uh for our students by Lions. Um, if kids, they they will be assessed in six different areas if that, if they have issues and hyprophy or asthema or anis. Yeah, asymmetric eyes, you know, um, I can't pronounce it correctly, but um, then the parents will get a uh report. That's it, that's, that's that. Um, so then, um, besides that, most of the time, we've been recently uh dedicated to obtaining the information board. As requested around the indoor air quality project at RIS, so. That's pretty much. And just to clarify, the incorrect comment in the newsletter article was just, I think they made a comment that. We had, as voters, already approved the project back in two thousand sixteen. Corrections, obviously incorrect. That's why we're discussing it tonight, so, okay. And the next one is the additional continuing contract certified staff report. Believe we just had one addition, so, Preston, do you wanna do that?
We missed one last.
Go ahead.
We missed one individual last week, um, or last month, so we just wanted to make sure to recognize Caitlin McKenzie as an additional continuing contract. Additional certified staff member who um obtained continuing contract this school year.
Thank you, congratulations, Sarah. Next up, we have Joe Prom with our district finance report.
Um. Keep this one brief this month, as the next two months will be a little more finance heavy. Uh, next month, we'll have our auditors here to present. Uh, the results of our audit for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. And then in December, we will have our truth and taxation hearing that relates to the um levy certification for the two thousand twenty-four taxes table. Uh, one thing I wanted to highlight um is on the food service side, obviously, this year. Um, with the legislature, the Minnesota Legislature approving um, basically picking up the difference between federal subsidies and um. And what the state was providing already, making meals, breakfast and lunch uh free for all students every day. We've seen a large increase in participation. Yeah, it's like I stepped on one already, but there's that one that's still alive.
And I'm.
Yeah. Um, but our meal participation has gone up greatly, um, comparing September to, this September to September of last year. We're serving about thirty-three hundred lunches per day out of about four thousand eligible students. And last year, we were serving about twenty-nine hundred per day, so we've gone up about three hundred fifty-nine lunches. We went from seventy-three percent participating to eighty-two. And on the breakfast side, we went from about five hundred and eighty a day to fourteen hundred and fifteen a day, so um. Up by almost a hundred and fifty percent on the breakfast side, which is outstanding. Um, we did staff up a little bit to accommodate for that. And we've had to react a little bit by addition, having some additional staff hours, especially in those uh breakfast cashier times. But we are up uh for the, for the month, we were up by two meals per labor hour across the board, so. Um, serving more than our additional staffing was. Definitely positive there. There is some work, I will, I won't steal Mike's thunder when it comes to tax levy information or tax base books. Oh, it's got some of that coming up in his presentation. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, next up is school board committee reports. Open it up, whoever wants to go.
Um, so I emailed you guys back around September, unfortunately, that I had submitted an F R O resolution. Um, I just wanted to give you guys a kind of update, so I've been kind of back and forth with MSBA, a couple of different people. Um, they did ask if I would sign on to another F R O resolution, um. I don't like it quite as much as I liked mine, because I felt like mine had kind of gone about the, we need to include the, the expert. In making these kind of decisions, um, and this one is a little bit more um. Heavy on legislative part of it, so I could, and some of it. Uh, I still signed my name to it because I feel like it's an important thing that we need to get a resolution made for. Um, but they were kind of asking if we, as a board, we'd be able to support it. So my plan was after tonight to email all of you what that new resolution is. Um, and I know we can't vote, but even if you still let me know on the first, that's what I, well done. Um, I would give that, give back to them and let them know if our board isn't support or if it would just be myself or whatever, maybe, so. Do you remember which district that? Um, originally, it was from Farmington, but um, I actually just asked her to read that to me today and it's completely different from the Farmington one that I told her.
Okay, so are they just trying to, because I'm sure a lot of people put in.
There really weren't, there really weren't. I wanna say she, I wanna say she said there were six resolutions written in.
Okay.
Um, and they just wanted to have one, I believe, so I mean, it makes sense to invalidate all of them.
Right, okay.
So trying to get. And that, that's not just six individuals, that could have been also like forwards, so like, right, but six resolutions somewhere.
And I think it goes to the delegate group for MSBA.
Right, and then the delegate group is the one that, yeah.
But instead of having however many resolutions for the delegate group to hold on, just having one.
We'll take some time then, a few minutes after the November first work session, if everybody's okay with that, Scott's side.
It is nine G, so be sure to.
Thank you, thank you. Um. I guess I can give a couple of updates, um. As you know, later on tonight, we're gonna vote on the teacher's contract, which means we were successful in reaching a tentative agreement with the teacher's union. Since our last meeting, uh, and they did already vote to approve it, so if we vote tonight to approve the contract, it will be final. Um, it was already mentioned, but the World's Best Workforce Committee meets tomorrow morning, seven thirty. That's about it. All right, oh, I should say, well, we'll get to it later, but uh, we do have a facilities and operations meeting coming up soon. Yeah, we'll give the details on that later.
I think we have a career in um technical education committee meeting coming up too.
Okay. Is that between now and our next board meeting?
Yeah, in November.
Okay.
Like between the regular board meeting, yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right. There's no other reports, we will move on to our action items. First one is approval of the Personnel Omnibus Resolution. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'm over.
Motion by Jen, second by Emily, any discussion or questions? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, aye. Any opposed, say nay. That passes. Uh, next one, action item is for approval of policies. So this is. The first motion I will look for is approval of policies five sixteen point five and six point one, which are brand new policies for the district. Do you have a motion? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Those two policies pass. Right, next on our list is approval of more policies. This time is policy four oh six, four twenty-seven. Five thirty-four, nine oh one, nine oh two, nine oh four, nine oh five, nine oh seven, and nine oh eight. And if I'm not mistaken, these are the ones, some of them are just statutory changes, which mean, means we can approve them right away. And others have non-substantive changes, so they don't need more. We have a motion for approval, I'm over.
Second.
Uh, I heard Jen, so I'll go, motion by Jason, second by Jen, any questions, comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye, aye. Any opposed, say nay. Say those policies pass. All right, fourth on our list is approval of the contract with the teachers' union, MCA. Um, first, do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Jen, second by Trisha, and I'm gonna start off the discussion by taking care of the requirements we have under statute, which is. Um, since one of our board members, Scott, is a stop of the teacher in that bargaining unit. Scott, I'm required to direct you to abstain from the vote, so when we vote, I'll ask for ayes and then nays, and then I'll ask for extensions. Um, the other requirement we have is that we are to publicly set out. The um. The main points of the contract, so I need to get to it here, and then I will publicly set those up. Thanks. And, okay, so, um. Total package cost increase to the district this time around, and these are um three-year contracts. This thirteen point six three percent, three, oh, I'm sorry, two-year, you're right. Um, two-year, thirteen point six three percent, previous contracts, the most recent one from uh fall twenty-one to spring twenty-three was twelve point oh nine. From two years prior to that, eight point six three percent increase. The salary schedule for the um upcoming two years, which includes this year and next school year, is four point five percent per year. We're removing one step, step O from the salary schedule, um, so that reduces the number of overall steps on the contribution scale. Uh, increasing health insurance premium contributions by six hundred on a single policy or twelve hundred on family policy for two thousand twenty-four. And for two thousand twenty-five, um, the numbers are the same, six hundred and twelve hundred. Increased longevity pay um for longest standard employees from four thousand to forty-three hundred. And allow for longevity pay in year eighteen, in this school year and year seventeen, next school year. Increase four oh three D contribution, provided match in year two to three. Uh, the four point five percent um for school year is also added to the extracurricular pay schedule. For teachers subbing during prep and lunch, they will be paid their actual hourly rate. Previously, they had a different miscellaneous hourly rate. For teachers subbing outside prep time or lunch, teachers will be paid at the substitute rate of pay. Was previously ambiguous. Um, then some language changes. Clarified, we clarified use of sick leave time for leave, leave of absence. We've added professional development language regarding use of professional development time when staff are compensated for attendance. We've added coaching professional development leave language to match with these scandals. We have given additional bereavement days for loss of a child, spouse, parent, or grandchild. Then another change we have is that we've added uh twenty minutes of flex time to each school day for the staff. Uh, to use either at the beginning or end of the day when a teacher is not with students. And we've included parameters for flexible days. We clarified the number of days required to work to qualify for step movement in a given year. Uh, we have changed the percentage of VBA contributions in October and January to match the insurance plan year. And we have changed the process for receiving a four oh three D match. So with those requirements out of the way, do we have any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, um, all in favor, say aye. Aye, aye. Any opposed, say nay. Any extensions, say aye. All right, so I have uh Emily, Trisha, myself, Jason and Jen voting in the affirmative. Nobody voting no, and Scott, it's stated, so the teacher's contract passes. Final action item on our list is the approval of the Riverview Intermediate School Long-Term Facilities Maintenance Bonds Parameters Resolution. In order to get to discussion, I would personally a motion, I make a motion to approve. Okay, motion by Jason, second by Emily. Uh, which means we are at the discussion phase, and I'm wondering if we have any certain presentation we wanna start with, maybe get some information out there, and I'm looking to discuss.
Yeah, so invited uh Michael Hazel, uh managing partner with Baird.
Public finance, and Mike is going to, Mike has worked on a number of these funding instruments uh, through LPFM program, and he's gonna walk through uh, kind of the background here as well as some, uh, St. Elstien Stephen specific information as it relates to our tax base, tax impact, and the type of financing we've been looking at here. So I'll let Michael do his presentation and feel free to ask any questions.
Yes, you can stop me anytime. Oh, uh, thank you, Joe. Uh, I've had the privilege of serving your district for over twenty plus twenty-five years, so uh, thank you for that. Uh, with that being said, the presentation I put together for you is something maybe you could put your back pocket parts of it, that, that sometimes you get some questions. It was an opportunity to put some information together for you. Uh, that kind of broads, we won't cover anything, but stop me if there's something you wanna see. Uh, with that being said, uh, I stole Joe's thunder, I apologize, Joe, cause it's got interest, but uh, just a reminder to folks that there's two different tax bases that the school district uh, has. Uh, we have a wonderful levy system that's not complicated at all, doesn't keep, keep, give Joe a permanent job for the rest of his life. Uh, we only have a hundred forty-five formulas that goes into putting your uh, taxes in front of you, the people. So with that, just a reminder that there's four, uh, there's four levies over something called referendum market value. That's a market value and it takes out your agricultural land beyond the dwelling value of the property, house garage, one acre, and it removes your seasonal rent property. Uh, with that, uh, your border approved operating levy, your local optional uh, revenue equity and transition levies are part of that. All other levies, the rest of the grouping, whether it's safe schools, whether it's your debt, whether it would be this I A Q project, are spread over the net tax capacity. That just means if they take market value times class rates, remove any possible credits for home debt, and that's spread. So two different types of tax bases. Um, what I wanted to show you is that you, as a school board, may be hearing, oh my goodness. You may have people complain about their assessments. Okay, so rural Minnesota, not that you're rural Minnesota, but rural Minnesota across the state, the county assessors last year got pushed hard. So we saw anywhere from seventeen to uh, thirty-nine percent increases in people's assessments. As people that work across the state, we assume that we're gonna get one year. So just a reminder that you have had an eleven-year run of about five point six percent. And last year, uh, that was almost quadrupled for, for you. That could, of course, have some you, of course, have had new building and new, new pieces, that doesn't, that's just saying the whole assessment, new annual. Uh, with that, uh, you had nineteen point four or five percent compared to that eighteen in net tax capacity. So that has, that tax base is considerably uh, risen to, but at an average of five point six one. It would make sense that this is a little higher uh, because when you get higher end homes, once you get over a class rate, or once you get over a half million dollar home being built, it's got a class rate higher than one percent. So it'll, it'll outpace that referendum market value. Uh, but I, what I wanted to see was, we're seeing across the state, another fifteen to thirty-five percent increase in rural Minnesota in assessments. You are not pacing that way, so this will slow down, so maybe you won't get the same comments. I wanted to show you that right here, referendum market value is predicted to grow eight point six one percent, and your next tax base is, is uh, uh, predicted to be nine point three six, but what are you made of? What makes up your sixty-seven percent residential homestead, two point two three percent ag, uh, residential non-homestead, seventeen point one two, and commercial industrial is eleven point one eight, or eleven point eight five, excuse me. So heavy residential and a nice balance of these other two components. Once again, back pocket item for you guys. Uh, there's your existing debt payment, so we're slowly, uh, uh, remember, uh, we have folks, you're gonna certify your levy this year in twenty-three for taxes payable twenty-four for fiscal twenty-five or school year twenty-four, twenty-five. So you've already certified this high point of twenty-four, and you're going to start dropping slightly down in future death serial payments. Uh, the next piece, L T F M, we love acronyms in the state of Minnesota, Long-Term Facility Maintenance Program is L T F M, and just a reminder, it started in two thousand fifteen. Uh, purposes, how do you qualify? A bunch of things, but we're now, you are on your way to receiving up to three hundred eighty dollars per pupil unit. But you, for those districts that received the full three hundred eighty, you have to have a building age index or inventory of thirty-five years or greater. So, uh, based on that, I every district qualifies to this as it was implemented. Uh, what happened was there were twenty back when I first started this, over thirty-plus years ago, there were twenty-some school districts that received alternative facilities money in the twin, most of them were in the Twin Cities area, you had Rochester. Uh, I don't even think St. Cloud qualified right away, and Duluth. Uh, now we're up to twenty-eight districts in that category that if they, if by board authority, they would like to uh, repave their parking lots, they could redo their roofs, they can exchange their windows, they just have to put it in a plan submitted to the state, and they could get, they could do this with school board approval. This program said, hey, let's make this more equitable across the state. Let's make sure that we're giving money for these deferred maintenance projects to keep the community's assets up, up to speed. So that started in two thousand fifteen, and the first, first money came in in fiscal year seventeen. Uh, with that, uh, we sent that over, we set that number, you heard some uh, wonderful statistics earlier tonight on test scores and how many students are taking that. I have to let you know that I have a freshman in college and a senior at Stillwater, and I can vouch for that the metro area kids uh, do not wanna miss class, and those high-end cor, high-end kids, I'm a proud papa. Uh, I know that I questioned my son with every, you know, seven words that he gives me. I said, hey, how's, how's that physics going? You should do that extra credit, folks. And he said, no, dad, I'm not gonna do it on a weekend. She, she gave me the assignment at five thirty on a Friday night on my day off. What? You're not gonna do it. You, you should do this. Pestered him all day Saturday. Saturday night, he finally passed, said, dad, I've got one wrong. It's worth two points. I said, well, you should still do it. So I didn't win on that, guys. Um, with that, uh, he, they, neither of my students, neither of my kids took that M C As uh, the last several years because they weren't gonna miss. They weren't gonna miss class. Uh, and yes, uh, my daughter should be able to graduate from Creighton in three years because of all the AP courses she got in high school. So, uh, with that being said, uh, remember that we talk many formulas, we talk about adjusted pupil units, folks. So we take your secondary seven through twelve, we weigh them at one point two times, everybody else is worth one. So with that, four thousand three sixty-five uh, times three eighty times this building age index, because you're at twenty-seven point two one versus thirty-five, you get about one point two million dollars of revenue to maintain all of your facilities. And you put that in a long-term facilities plan. Another piece of this is, although in the big picture, you don't have a large component of egg land in your district as proportion to those people, if you do borrow for this, the people that still pay egg taxes will receive a seventy percent credit on this particular bond payment levy. So this just says, what can we do, how can we use these? Basically, the state of Minnesota says make your building, turn it upside down, imaginary shake it up, if you shake it and it falls out, it doesn't qualify for long-term facility maintenance money. Put it back over, put the roof back on. All that qualifies. If you have indoor air quality issues, if you have asbestos removal, or um, if you have some fire approved fire, fire safety needs, those are what we call above the line. Meaning you get three hundred eighty dollars for most everything to use in your plan. If you have other incidences of the three that I just mentioned, you get above the line, or we call it stackable dollars, meaning if you have a project that's not sexy to voters, but will enhance the airflow and meet address, after standards, then you can decide via a school board uh, resolution that's being asked tonight to improve the air quality of that particular facility or all your facilities. So, uh, basically, uh, we are working behind the scenes, many education groups and lobbyists, uh, which we're not, but they've come to, a few of us professionals have been doing this for over thirty years and said, what would make most sense? Does it make sense to lobby for three hundred eighty bucks per kid? Let's change it to five hundred? Or should we say, hey, our biggest problem is if we can't keep the dampness and wetness from coming through our roof, if we could have money to fix a roof, do pavement projects and sidewalks, and not change it three eighty, but put that above the line, that would make the most impact to, to schools, so they're gonna try that legislatively, it looks like this year. It is in the proposed governor's bill, we'll see how it pans out. We also have something in there called all health and safety items. So I got a few districts and states that have had mercury in their gym floors. They're on their final sand after forty years on, on these wonderful old gym floors, so you're gonna have to pull them up, that's gonna expose mercury. So, uh, my chemist, my wonderful chemistry teacher in Kingsland, Minnesota, said, asked us, well, how many, how many thermometers in that? He said, well, it's be like dropping something like a hundred fifty thermometers around center court, so um, whatever that means. With that, L T F M funds may, uh, there was gender neutral in this year's legislation allows you to put in a gender neutral with uh, for maintenance dollars. Okay, that's gonna, that needs to be cleaned up, cause we can't have a whole section of law on deferred maintenance items and then say, hey, we can build new over here. So we think that will be cleaned up legislatively this next year. But with that, things that you can't, you can't lease purchase, you can't do energy efficiency, and you can't do violence prevention with dollars, and you can't do stuff that, you can't put in new stuff. So a little, little reminder or a recap, hey, what, what's gone on since two thousand seventeen? Well, we had twenty of those twenty-eight districts that are, could, could fix their facilities and move things forward, as long as it met taxpayers' expectations. Uh, twenty out of twenty-eight of those districts uh, have participated in bond and have a, have a paid two thousand twenty-four levy totally in a hundred sixteen million dollars. Uh, eighty-seven districts are participating in the old I, I A Q or H health and safety. This was, hey, if you needed to change your air handlers and uh, or come off a steam boiler and move to a water-based system and improve airflow, dehumidification. Uh, they've got eighty-seven districts across the state have a total levy of fifty-two million, that was pre-L T F M. Uh, the new I A Q, another ninety-three districts have uh, forty-four million above that line of the three eighty. Uh, these ninety-three districts since two thousand seventeen have borrowed approximately eight hundred and seventy-seven million dollars, folks. So there are many districts that are taking advantage of hey, we know this is not something easily explainable to our public, it's tough to vote on it. Legislatively, they've recognized it by implementing this program, and thus, uh, you can see that uh, out of, out of three hundred and uh, twenty-nine to thirty-one districts, depending if you take our Princeburg and Franconia, who don't have facilities in the state, uh, ship their kids out, um, then you count those, uh, you've got a large amount. So a hundred sixty-six districts uh, are pro, are participating in the regular bond program with their regular three eighty, and districts borrowing about items one, two, and three, total a hundred and seventy-four of those districts. So quick stats. Um, project budget and financing scenario, um, this can be wherever you choose, but the graph just says, how could we potentially layer in that new payment along with your uh, border approved items? And uh, we look at not to, or borrowing nineteen point six million and a average home size, this would be about eleven dollars sixty-five cents or three, or, excuse me, on a three hundred thousand dollar home, or a hundred thirty-nine dollars and eighty-three cent impact. That pays for the total principal interest, and right now, we have an estimate borrowing rate of a five point one percent in there. Your egg homestead, um, you gotta change about uh, uh, for a four thousand assessed acre, twenty-nine cents. Five thousand assessed acres of point three six, you'll probably say, well, you do have some mainland, I can sell it for more than that, you gotta go back to the assessed value. We know acres is selling pretty high. So to highlight what's in your resolution, your resolution sets a not to exceed a nineteen point six million. It allows the board and Baird and your vendors, there's other vendors that are assisting with this I A Q to update the long-term facilities plan that you submitted this summer. It, we put in uh, this borrowing and put everything forward. It allows you to say, to participate in this sort of credit enhancement program, that just says, in the event of a catastrophe, uh, the state comes and steps and pays off or pays your levy for that year or two that in, in the event a tornado hits or some calamity. Uh, allows expenditures so that if you've done some preliminary estimates or had some expenditures that chose made out of the general fund, that you can reimburse that uh, general fund account with those dollars after you borrow. And this bond purchase agreement, if it's not approved by uh, March first of two thousand twenty-four, it does expire. In the event that you do pass the resolution, then the next steps for us are, just as a reminder, as we gather information from the district, we gather information to from your reporting counties, we obtain a credit rating, uh, work with the district to gather all that information, present that to a credit agency. Uh, probably go with Moody's again, cause they have your outstanding credit ready and they're familiar with your district, your underlying rating is an A one. Uh, you probably are going to stick around that category and not move, jump up to the double A category merely because of the size of your tax-based school district, not because you aren't an outstanding credit. Uh, just one of those facts, uh, folks, aside, in this region does matter a little bit on that, on that credit rating. Uh, we will nationally market this to potential investors and uh, pursue the sale of bonds prepared, given the opportunity, so. I believe I have taken quite a bit more time than I thought I would, so thank you so much, and I'll be happy to enter entertaining questions you may have.
Hang on a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Five point one, you said was the estimated borrowing rate on that?
Correct.
And have you done any sales recently, or why is that so much better than what we're seeing in the market for by go to refinance mortgage?
Oh, yes, absolutely. So, so in our, in our terminology, we talk about true interest costs of the bond would be a five point one one, that's equivalent to your uh, bond mortgage rate. It's because the first three years, Joe, uh, our yield curve is inverted, folks. So if you were to ever look at C N B C and look at bond yields, you would see uh, one month, two months, three months, six months, then it goes two, three, five, seven, ten, twenty, thirty. Your yield curve was gonna be about here at a five seventy at the beginning, and I didn't look today, cause I've been driving back from North Dakota, I saw the eastern part of Minnesota already today, and I drove back here tonight for the meeting, so I didn't look it up, but I think thirty years coming in at about a four thirty, so we're getting about five seventy-five, dropped down to about that high, that low four percent. So we would be spreading this as, as shown as shown, whoops. One, it's tax exempt, or the trustees are taxable, and two, with that longer yield curve, we're able to, because of the rates being a little bit lower, we'll be able to stay in that, that range. If we were to shorten it to a three, four-year deal, then, then we'd be, our rate would be higher.
Um, Mike on the side where this is falling under employer quality, correct?
Yes.
Because I would see multiple categories on one of the spreadsheets I think you had provided, but this is falling under I A Q, the ninety-three district. It looked like eight of them if you were to take, had approved an amount uh, twenty million or higher, like a larger amount than what we're looking at. But then when I looked at those, there's some of the really large ones, like forty-nine million, thirty-two million. When I went in and looked at those districts and where they were approved, explain this to me, it's like they were approved Ridgeville is one, they were approved as part of a referendum, but the board had the um, authority to approve that portion, the I A Q portion, but it was still including. The, um, authority to approve that portion, the I A Q portion, but it was still included in conjunction with a larger, much larger referendum. So it all kind of passed together. It appeared like Brainerd, Richfield, a lot of really large ones out of the eight that were higher than ours were approved in that way. But they were still showing as an I A Q bond approval. How does that work?
So, uh, not to name names, we'll talk about Saint Peter.
Sure.
Minnesota. What could have been your capital Minnesota way back when? Um, Saint, Saint Peter has a potential I A Q project, very similar in size. I believe it's twenty to twenty five million is what they're looking at right now. Or they have a steam boiler plant that they would like to change their middle school to a, to a hot water based. They are contemplating. Saying that, hey, while we're in these, while we're opening up these, these ceilings. While working on our walls and taking out our old, old radiators. This is a really good opportunity to, uh, work on flexible spacing. Flux, provide flexible spacing, redo a stairwell, redo the old music rooms that were touched with the tornado. Uh, of nineteen ninety eight, if I remember correctly. Um, so what many people do is, hey, we've got the unsexy part that we're gonna, we're gonna have asked the board to do. We're gonna cook, at the same time, we're gonna combine that with a border approved issue. So that, folks, if you say no, we, we're still gonna do this. We're gonna, all our information we're gonna lay out is we're gonna show the tax impact for both. But you're voting on this piece. But when they sell the bonds. We don't want to have multiple issues out there to have. That the rating agency would say, okay, we're gonna rate three bonds. We rate it all as one to save costs.
Right.
So we have the attorneys and so the way the data that I had to gather it on the national. System, that's how I could. I could break it out is I could tell that a reason of that was for I A Q purposes to fit in this batch. That I was requesting data on, whereas I, but I know it's a part of. A school board approval. So that's why you've got some of that data that I had, I had asterisk on. That said, ah, I know what's in here. I know I'm close. The other piece of this is, um. And I don't know if you discussed, when you're, I, when, when. Joe talked about your long-term facility maintenance plan. The cost of putting a roof. On your schools, if you were contemplating patching an area or doing something, if you'd see prices two years ago, one year and. And just recently, last couple of months, you're going to see an incredible inflationary uptick. We're not in a five percent. Five, since nineteen sixty six, I could look you all in the eye and say, hey. We usually have five percent construction inflation. We had it through two thousand eight, two thousand nine, two thousand ten, where anomalies, we were back in that realm. We are nowhere near that the last three years. We have some pieces that are up as high as fifty five percent. Other pieces, roofs happening, we won, cement is another that has huge impacts. So. Um, that's another thing, those, those prices. You know, there was that realm where they were decent for I A Q. I A Q has become really expensive per square foot. Versus what it was two or three years ago. So that's also why you saw all sudden you're seeing, boom, we've seen. Eight to sixteen million dollar projects and all of a sudden we're starting to see sixteen to thirty million dollar projects.
Well, and I guess that was my question is like, because. So when you look at like I C S had posted the referendums that had passed, the big ones that it included HVAC. Or indoor air quality in them, they show it as the total bond. So, you know, a hundred nineteen million. They're including that thirty one, whatever million that was. That was passed by the board essentially, but it was included as, as part of the referendum. I guess my question is, is. Has there been many instances in a total this big where it's aid not being already included in a community vote referendum? Has there been? It's tough to really see on a spreadsheet, but has there been any districts that have just? Board vote only approved twenty plus million dollars without it being included into a larger community vote.
Oh, I think that's, I think you're going to see more and more of that, especially since. Uh, ashtray standards are really started, have started to change. Uh, you know. I don't know if I can say post-COVID yet. But, you know, looking at filtration, looking at pieces, you know, looking at. Different aspects of what you can get. Uh, with a ceiling change with, with now you may have to do some lighting retrofitting while you're in the ceiling for your indoor air quality. What improvements that that has on learning?
Yeah.
Um, so that those impacts are, I think you're, um. I would say that we probably have five or ten of. Districts that are, that are talking about these, these components and asking school boards to.
Are we, are we kind of?
I think we're gonna, I, I don't want to say it, but I think you're gonna be a trendsetter.
Yeah.
I think you're gonna see more and more of this as, 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 as some of the other districts debt has fallen off. As tax-based changes. As COVID, more awareness and what they had to do to get through it, uh, I think you're just gonna see more and more of this.
I have seen a few of the old referendums on almost strictly HVAC recently too. Have you seen some of those where that's been? Essentially the item, granted they're not at the dollar amount that we're looking at, but smaller districts, smaller school, obviously, but.
Um. I, I just worked with, uh, G F W, given Fairfax, Winthrop, uh, in central Minnesota. And what we did in that instance is look, folks, they, they, uh, went and statutory operating debt. Uh, a couple of previous administrations and asked for six, had asked for. Very large referendums. And we came back and said, look, if you want to keep your existing two buildings, we need to do about forty nine million dollars in capital improvements. And you aren't gonna change anything that you do for education. You're not gonna change any flexible spaces. You're not gonna get X, Y, Z. Folks, if you want to do that, we can do that and we'll do that under this, this program. We'll do a majority of that under this program. And then turned around and said, look. You've got, you know, here's an age of seventy five to. Eighty-three. Year old buildings. If we build essentially located in the middle of the state, the three cities said, yes, we want that. Uh, their municipalities came in and supported it. The superintendent said, okay, I'm gonna support you cities. I'm gonna lobby for a million dollars for each of your cities to do some economic development to help us. Uh, and there we passed the sixty nine million dollar brand new pre K through twelve building. In a form of two questions. So that one would have been the biggest I A Q project. Uh, for that size school. Of just under seven hundred kids, six hundred, seven hundred kids. So you can see that they, they had some severe needs. So you're going to see more of that where. They're gonna say, this is your option, but do you want to spend good money? On old buildings or do you want to spend good money and get something, a shiny new penny that can last for next fifty to a hundred years? So. We're seeing a lot, and it's all over the board. It's just. You maintain your facilities, you've had the support. Uh, I can remember your last referendum. Uh, obviously pre Joe, uh, and. I was running numbers for Steve and we were in that, he's, he was like, well, I think we're in that eighteen to. Maybe we might make it to twenty five million. And then they came back and sees you never, never believe us. They wanted to, they want, we want this and it's going to be over a hundred million. Michael, what do you think of this? And I said, you're about to have a heart attack. I mean, there, right? And he said, yeah, sign go. So, I mean, it, it's all in what, okay, what's, what's the appetite? What is in it for the community? You know, I think one of the neatest things I had was I had a community member. About eight years ago, sitting in an audience, he was listening to what the school is going to be adding. And it was incredibly high tax impact. We're talking four hundred and fifty dollars on maybe a hundred fifty thousand, two hundred dollar house. And this young man looked at it and said, we get all this for four hundred bucks for our kids and for our community? Let's go. It's all a matter of perspective. Sartell's been a let's go. As long as I've been around. And that's, I mean, that's pretty cool. That's pretty neat. I grew up in Cambridge, I said, folks, my dad was superintendent for twenty five years. And he was known as the most conservative man alive. And, uh, the city, the first. He laid out a plan his whole career, said, we gotta fix the elementarys, middle schools in Cambridge. Gonna fix the elementarys, middle schools in I Santee. And one day, we're gonna have a big impact at the high school because all those kids are coming through and we're gonna need the room and we're needing enhancements. So. I think it was nineteen ninety six when they ran a nineteen million dollar bond issue. And October tenth, the city came out and said, uh, we discovered some fraud and we gotta raise taxes sixty six percent. And so my father called and said, well, it's not gonna pass, Michael. Said, yeah, well, Dad, you've been talking about this for over twenty years. Uh, sixty six percent. So, um. They also were back, back in the day, it was just saying it was much like Sartell, saying Stephen.
Can I ask you a question on the, I think it was the total cost or total interest cost of five point one one percent?
Yeah.
Is it fair to ask you if you have any projections on what that would be if we were? Approving a project six months or twelve months from now as opposed to?
Uh, so, so this nineteen six is projected to be just shy of thirty three million. Um. How many Fed speakers are gonna, are you a lot gonna allow? Talk next week and this week? I think we're slated for fourteen presentations over the next week. Uh, a week and a half ago. Before Chairman Paul of the Federal Open Market Committee talked. Um. It was looking like we weren't gonna get a rate, rate increase in November at all. In fact, we were talking about rate cuts in twenty four. What's coming up in twenty four? You think, you think our wonderful political parties are gonna keep raising rates through the election? Maybe Chairman Paul could pull it off. I think we've got one more rate increase and I think we'll balance out. It just depends on what. It, are they working and what's happening to that inflation curve? Um. I actually thought that we'd maybe drop a percent. And that you could hold off. However. Go back to once again. What? What you would save in a one percent differential interest? You may lose in five to ten percent increase in construction inflation. So the balancing arms there, I'll tell you that, um, in, in the event. You know, there's more than one way to skin a cat, of course. Uh, looking at your timeline, some of the things we could be creative on is how much money do you intend to spend on the next year? We could buy for, we could do this borrowing and one or more borrowings. So we could borrow. X amount to get you started and a year from now. You could take the risk and say, okay, are we gonna borrow at or low? The other piece of this, as you know, is if interest rates that we've done in the past, if interest rates do decrease, we of course then. Um, have refinanced your debt once or twice, uh, to save taxpayer dollars. So you've got the backup of that. If you say, well, I'm not sure I'll roll the dice in this political environment, especially. Um, we have changed so much to a world economy. And our tax-exempt market, even though it's a national tax-exempt market, has been impacted as that. Is that as well, uh, your local, I mean, your banks aren't buying paper right now. They're not buying, you know, if we were to sell less than ten million dollars for you. Banks typically only need to collateralize twenty percent for bank qualified paper. So we get a reduced rate for the district. They don't have, they're not investing in your bonds right now. Not city one, but right now they have the, we have not on our. Every day in the market, our national orders are not showing any banks participating in those orders. To trust. Wells, US Bank, some of those are participating with their trust side of the business, not the agents.
Any other questions for Michael? I think, thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
So onto the. Let's go through amongst the board, um. I talked to a couple of you about this idea, but I thought we'd just. Try to cut this down as much as we can and maybe start with. Because I think I've pieced together that. Everybody at this table from where I can understand agrees that this. It's not a want project. This is a need. You can start with that. Everybody's heads are nodding. So we don't need to go into any. Question of whether this needs to be done. It's just a question in my mind then of. When and how? And how being the mechanism that we get to a yes vote because if it's a need, we ultimately need to land at some sort of a yes vote either at this table. Or in public. So. I think that's where our discussion needs to go. I'll open it up to anybody's thoughts.
Well, I, I, I agree, uh, again, when we were first told from. The old super, uh, that we were gonna be faced with this task. Um. It kind of was a shock to, uh, when we wanted to come in, I would. I want to speak for you, but I, I was kind of like. What's going on here? Uh, twenty million dollar. Potential, uh, investment. That we'd have to look at. So I, I wanted to get this out into the public as soon as possible. That's why I did kind of reach out to you and forced us to. Do that walkthrough with Jesse and, and with Joe. So. I wanted to take this in a manner that we could have time to get this to the community. Because up until this point, we really didn't know about. Okay, or could, some people knew about it, but. It wasn't this, you know, the building is on fire kind of attitude. And as soon as we brought this to, to public, it seems like all of a sudden switch went off and now. It's being just. Forced down our throat right now and saying, hey, we have to use these funds. We've had a chance as the board to discuss this in a. A good manner. Um, we all agree it needs to be done, but our big, huge, uh. Pressure point right now is we've been asked to look at what the experts are telling us. And we have listened to those experts, uh, that have come to these board meetings and they even said. It's not on fire. We can't be voting with our hearts. We have to vote with, you know, can't go off a feeling. So if it's not about the implode or going to catastrophic meltdown, then I think. What we need to do is we need to let the public vote on this issue. Uh, it's a twenty million dollar debt. So that's my opinion and, and I don't know, I don't see you guys that much more.
Let me hold on.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I mean. I think that you're right, Matt, that. The discussion needs to be about how we fund it. And when we fund it. Um, it hasn't always operated around that in the past few months, which has made it difficult because I think there's been a lot of questions. That have been posed. In an effort to understand the best way to go about funding this, especially when, like Mike had said, we might. Kind of be acting as trendsetters here with this dollar amount being passed. Through simply a board vote and not a community vote. I mean, that's, that's kind of what I've been getting at is I'm not seeing information supporting that other districts have been doing this. You know, commonly at this dollar and while pushing it through in this way. So. To be a trendsetter, we better be, be sure we're well informed, um. Before we would make a decision like that. And the decision may be. Let's let the community decide if we're going to be trendsetters in this way. Let's not, let's not make ourselves that by forcing that. Could have huge implications on the future. And. I think, Tom, you read us the board code of ethics last month. Um, and it's my job to be primarily motivated by a desire to provide the best possible education for the students in my school district, which I fully agree with. And for that reason. I have to acknowledge that. We are only going to be able to provide the best education if we have community support. If we don't do this in the correct way. And take the time to do it correctly, future needs. Of the students, future needs of facilities, uh, future needs in the district. We are risking losing that support in the long term. Although we might have short-term gains by giving this project gun. In the long term, what do we lose? If we lose community trust? If we are not well informed in making a somewhat unprecedented decision like this. So. I think that outweighs. The, uh. Desire to get it done fast. I think we need to do it right versus doing it fast. And I don't know that we've landed on a conversation where we've all agreed that one way or the other is correct.
Any else have an improvement?
I mean, I guess I can go, um. I. There have been times where questions have been asked repeatedly, um, and specific questions. And I feel like they've been met with resistance and pressures. Um, I don't feel that I have enough information to make an informed decision. Um, I don't feel that I have enough information to make an informed decision. So, uh, I mean, I'll keep it short and sweet, but I, I, Matt, I think you had said in one of our meetings, vote now and we can explain later, and I just don't agree with that. I want to be able to answer that of our community members and make sure that I know the project that we are tasked with, tasked with as well. And I agree that it needs to be dealt with and needs to be addressed. But I also think there needs to be conversations about what to do in the interim too, because we can't start this project. Even if we vote tonight, it doesn't start until twenty twenty-five. And I feel like we really haven't had any conversations about what other things we can do in the interim.
Can I ask you just to clarify?
Yeah.
But I guess I'm not following what you're saying about what other things you have in the interim.
For example, it sounds like there's not windows that open on this. I think it's the south side of the building. Is it, you know, or is it the north parts of the, the zone? Is that something that we want to discuss and investigate in? Do we, I mean, that might be something that we can address to at least allow some sort of airflow into that part of the building in those classrooms specifically? And I don't think we've even talked about that.
A lot of buildings don't, a lot of your newer style buildings don't have windows that even open up.
But Old Bridge and High Metal.
They do because they're built in a timeframe that, that was relevant and that's only due construction. A lot of your newer buildings have sealed windows because the, the pressures that work inside the air handling system, it throws them off and then they also, they'll, they'll mess with your thermostat and the newer style buildings are so automated that they don't, they don't use some differentials when they're dispensing your CFM's here.
You're talking about kind of stopgap type solutions or between now and whenever the work would be done?
Well, yeah, is there, I mean, is there a thing what we can do? Cause honestly, I had asked the question in the beginning, like, what can we do as a district to help financially offset the, or, you know, help with the burden to the taxpayers? And I was told nothing. Well, is that true? Like, do we have funds that could be used for this? Are there other things? It sounds like maybe windows wouldn't be an option, but you know, would windows be something that we could contribute to that building? I don't know, but those are discussions that would be helpful and information in moving forward instead of this is a, the one solution that we've been given is that it's a gut job. Are there other options available? I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. No, I think everybody knows where I stand, um. We can keep delaying it, but the delay is gonna cost more money. You have not answered the question of if you got your voter approval and it's denied, what is your game plan? Go back out again, that's obviously.
Where was the game plan before we even got outvoted on this floor? Okay. Okay, because there was no game plan.
There was a game plan.
Okay, so what if it failed back then? What was your game plan if that system failed?
We, the game plan for the tenure plan to do the athletic facilities on the high school and the HVAC. And that was the plan at the time of the board.
And where are you on the HVAC? Right now, dealing with it now, ten years later, that's, that's what he's saying. That was the plan. And, and what was the plan if it would have went down? Because all of a sudden now, as soon as we get in here, now that is the, it, it's like ready to implode and now we have to do emergency plan for.
I, I'm not, I, I believe the experts that have come in, I don't, I don't think it's gonna fail over tomorrow. But you've seen the pictures and this video, walk on the teachers that can't even hang stuff on the wall because of the humidity. I'm trying to solve the educational environment in that building. I'm not worried about it imploding.
Okay, we're trying to solve that problem too. And right now, making a snap judgment or decision like that for a twenty million dollars, that's not being responsible.
One of the comments I heard, I rewatched the public comment section or the listening session that was today and somebody made the comment from the community that really struck with me because he said, you know, no, it's not a catastrophic failure risk. But it is a failure to some extent because it's a non-conducive learning environment that they currently. So the more this project gets delayed, the more kids have to go through there, a thousand a day without a conducive learning, where and I don't want to use the word urgency, but yeah, there is a hurried sense to this compared to when we got our bid in two thousand, or not bid, our estimate in two thousand twenty-one compared to when it was first mentioned in two thousand fifteen, because we see the financial reality and, um, inflation is only going up in by a lot. So that adds a bit of rush to the project. I guess I can use that word. And also there's a bit of rush because yes, we've got new information this summer as things were further looked into. But now there is a lead time of quite a while longer than we had originally anticipated. When, when we got the number this spring, when we got the number in two thousand twenty-one, the estimate of what we would have to go out for for bonds, it was assuming you'd be able to approve the project and have it start then here. But now we're looking at a year and a half down the road before it even begins. So with an aging system, I, I find it really tough to say that we shouldn't do it now. And I, in thinking about this recently, I'm, yes, of course, thinking about the need of the students, the learning environment there, but I'm also thinking of the impact on taxpayers. And to me, the only impact that we need to consider on taxpayers is the bottom line project cost. The bottom line is what everybody will see on their tax impact, their property tax statements that you owe X amount for this project. So I don't want to spend time necessarily talking about what items we might be able to get competitive estimates in, like on the construction management fee, architect's fee, because if we're talking about adding a million or more dollars a year in construction inflation alone, we're never gonna get a two point two or two point four million dollar construction management fee or architect's fee cut in half. I mean, we've already got, we've been told several times and Tom's got great experience in this area, that we've already got a competitive cost on that, you know, twelve point some percent for those two professional, uh, services is very competitive to begin with, that having cut in half and offset any construction inflation rate is just gonna be next to impossible. So, yeah, for me, sure, if, if there was a possibility where construction management fee and getting competitive bids or architects fees and getting, you know, competitive comparisons would cut the bottom line down of the project, I'm all for it. Let's do it. I just don't see that as a reality at this point. I think the only way we're gonna serve the students well and serve the taxpayers as well is to move forward with this relatively quickly. And I would hope that we can vote it in tonight to get the process going, save on those construction inflation costs. Like we'll talk about construction inflation would completely offset or you wouldn't be able to catch up even if you got a better interest rate here down the line. Uh, even if it was a point lower. So that's, if there's any sense of urgency or rush to me, it's that. It's not that I want to jam it down the throats of taxpayers or whatever hyperbole has been used before, but to me, it's that that's the most responsible thing, both for our students and for our taxpayers is to get this moving so that it doesn't cost so much more when we manage to get. And because we've already agreed that at some point we need to get to some sort of a yes at some level. So I guess that's where I stand, um.
Um, I guess I can share, I think we've had a lot, a lot of talk about there's not a catastrophic in in the future. And I mean, I can't predict if I'm gonna get rear-ended, rear-ended tomorrow and I can't predict if my son is gonna fall off my place and break his arm in three places tomorrow or next week or next month. I guess to me, I, I really want to echo what Matt just said, like, I, I don't know what's coming. I mean, two years ago, we almost had to cancel school because one of Jesse probably knows this better, like, it was freezing. And thankfully Jesse was able to save that building and save all of that stuff. And we got really lucky and I don't want to keep relying on that luck. I would like to have that plan that yes, we're gonna redo this and I would love to get creative in ways of like, what can we do if something does happen in the next three years or in the process of fixing that? But I don't want to keep saying like anything other than let's move forward because this is the best for our kids. Like, all of our students in Sartell and St. Stephen deserve to be in an environment that's regulated by temperature. None of our students should be stuck in an eighty-nine degree classroom ever. I've been in the middle school even today and I was sweating because it was just really hot. It's, it's, it's normally hot right now for this end of year. I'm not critiquing anything that's being done in our, in our temperatures and our any of that, but like it was hot today at the middle school and that system has the, everything in place. Like, I don't even know what it was like ever before. I'll tell you tomorrow because I'm there tomorrow, but I just what's best for our kids. And I, again, with our, like, it's, the price is only gonna go up, so I don't see what waiting really gets us as a board. Like, we can continue to wait and we can go up to the public, but at the end of the day, that's only going to cost everybody, myself, you guys, all of us included, more money. And I just don't see the benefit.
I mean, at this point, what we're talking about, we just can, we're gonna continue coming to this impasse because it's all about, we keep coming this way, even though it can be said over and over and over again, that we all agree this is a need. That has summer urgency behind it to address. Saying it for months. That's never been a point in which we have contention as a board. It's hot, it's sticky, it's humid. It is not the best learning environment. That is not something we disagree on. We've spent months coming back to that point as if there's anybody on this board that doesn't disagree or that doesn't agree on that. What we've been talking about is how do we fund this? And how are we getting the information necessary to make an informed decision on that? We have one estimate from one company with one option to fix this. We are in the field of trend setters now. If we were to approve this as a board only vote, this is not common as we've been told. This is actually not a no-brainer as we've been told. There are other districts still going out for referendums for just HVAC projects, probably because of the increased cost. And because of that increased cost, it makes a vote like this on behalf of the community without asking for their voice in something this, of this magnitude, it makes it that much more dramatic where you would actually want to go out of your way to make sure you have that community input. Because this would be the, like Mike said, one of the first that had passed of this dollar amount in this way. So do we want to be that? Do we want to do that? I don't want to do that. I don't want to pass twenty million dollars to be the trend setter in the state for using this type of funding for the largest amount up to this point. I don't want to do that. I wanna, I want to take care of this issue in the correct way. And we're not the only district dealing with this, but we seem to be the only district that can't get beyond this point of we're not arguing whether it needs to be done or whether it needs to be done quickly. We are arguing about how to fund it. That's it.
Does it surprise anybody that nobody from the community has voiced a negative opinion, did, you know, to the board?
Well, considering there was a online campaign that was started with a copy and paste that was essentially sent to the board and over and over and over that.
I'm not comparing it.
But I, yes, I do.
Is it strange that not one person has sent an email to the board and think, don't do this?
One person has, but I know you do speak to people in the community and I've heard both sides. I, I've heard absolutely both sides of the issue. And the thing is, is that the need, I don't think anybody's disagreeing. Most of the emails that we did is that this needs to be done. It's not a need or it's not a want. It's a need. Absolutely. And we all agree on that. That's the, that's the bulk of the emails that we receive.
So I guess I'd love to know if, if it's a need and we all agree, we've all gotten to that. What is the benefit in not doing it for our students and our taxpayers? Has anybody said we weren't gonna do anything? But what's, what's, what's the benefit of waiting if not doing anything? I know, but what's the benefit of waiting since November or January or February? What, what's the benefit?
The benefit would be having a referendum so the community could voice
and costing them more money.
Potentially, that's speculation, either a negative, that's speculation at that point. I mean, we don't know that.
I don't know that construction inflation rate is fixed. Yeah, Michael, you have a comment?
Because state legislators changed notification period, February is no longer on the table for your next referendum component. You're gonna be hard pressed to get to April because decisions will need to be made, uh, next, next month you'd be calling for an election of everything submitted to the state uh, for approval in just by December. So that would, that would then say, okay, you're doing more than HVAC and you're adding other components like windows. If I were to grab something that was being said around the table, you're going to add more to the kitty to fix the school, then your probably earliest vote is you could possibly get it to May, but you're probably looking at August, which is primary or November, which is presidential, which you probably, uh, going back have uh, based on statistics, you have less of a chance because people uh, not informed on school district decisions will be voting that in essence, uh, just, just a half percent in rates, uh, would buy you one year of construction inflation. So you would more likely have two years of construction inflation added to that. If that, if that, if any of that helps, but I'm thinking the earliest you could get to vote is May and you have to turn it around to your decision in two months. I believe that would still allow you for design to meet your summer of twenty-five would be, uh, as Joe is, uh, giving me some facial expressions, I'm thinking design bill might be talked for a twenty-five.
A May vote.
Strictly beats on, but it could be your potential issue. So then your earliest, you got guaranteed I can't use that word, sorry folks, twenty, that one is this twenty, your, your implementation is twenty-six, which then would twenty thirty out of in that scenario, yeah, twenty-six, thank you.
So, okay, other questions? Being that this has been around one estimate, one scope of work, one option.
Well, can I just clarify that? I, I thought we'd had Gregory, Sam and ICS.
Is designed to be corrected. They are the ones that did the initial drawing and estimate. And Gregory Sam added the projected construction cost grant. But this whole of the work has been looked at by. ICS supported it, right?
Yeah.
Yes, I supported the work, but they did not do an actual estimate. And was that in twenty twenty-one?
That was just recently, wasn't it?
That was the spring, May, spring.
Why don't we have anything? Yeah, why don't we have any documentation that? Cause that's something we've been asked for.
That's the same, it's the same documentation. If you look on, if it says ICS and design tree and that's the same thing that's confirmed by.
Okay, so it's the one estimate that we have still.
Yeah, it's one estimate that's been looked at by experts, three different construction expert, big firms.
Okay.
Like, that know a lot more.
So what other, like for a district that isn't able to pass in this way or has a referendum fail, like say Paul did, what are the options? I mean, Lee, this is maybe a question for you, but what are the options that this thing can go then to start addressing the issue without the gut job? Cause there are plenty of districts that, I mean, Apollo is one of them. That's had to do it in sections over a stretch of years.
Right, because.
The referendum fails.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, I'm not an engineer, unfortunately. I don't know what interim solutions there could be to keep the Band-Aid on it. I think everything we're just doing right now are, are all the Band-Aids that.
Get another box of Band-Aids, Justin. Yeah, I mean, bottom line is that all adds cost to the project. We're talking about replacing windows on an entire half of our building. That's, that adding cost to the bottom line, which granted, that won't be part of the bond units that goes on property tax statements, but it does take away from our LTFM funds or.
So if we were to give more information in general, that's adding, that's adding money.
Let's see how it couldn't add money to do further work to patch a problem and push out the ultimate project.
To get this information.
My question is, why do you need that information?
To a community of nineteen thousand people, why I'm voting through the largest LTFM health and safety bond for twenty million dollars. I don't have a reason why. Details, I better have something to back it up.
Because we've got the details regardless of what other districts are doing. We know the situation we are in. The details have been laid out for, what, eight years since two thousand and fifteen? We know it's a gut job that we need to do. We know it's a gut job that we need to do. We've talked the details. We've got plans to do with LTFM funds that we've already got to redo the lighting, make it. Or efficient and better. We know the project that needs to be done. So we have the details, and we also have the details about what the construction industry costs are doing. What the bond rates are doing. We have the details that all point to the fact that if we delay this project, that we all agree needs to be done. It will simply cost the taxpayers more, no matter what. Partial line items we can save a little bit on, the overall project, according to everything we've been told. Will only get more expensive if we don't vote it in now and get the process started. That's what you tell the taxpayers. I believe they would understand. That's my.
Well, I don't know what to tell, that's the problem is, what do I tell the taxpayers?
That it's a needed project, and we all six have already agreed to that, and the more we wait, the more it will cost.
So when the question, because again, there hasn't been any negative feedback from the community supposedly, but when you do have conversations with people from the community, a lot of. Well, it happened at the listening session. The largest question is twenty million dollars, why? What, and these are people that are maybe knowledgeable in the industry, maybe have some engineering background, why? And and that's the, those are the questions we can't answer. We don't have that information.
Those were the questions that were answered at the listening session, which is. Construction costs have a lot to do with the size of the building, the scope of the work that needs to be done itself. There's a lot of very specific. Facts about a building that goes into what work needs to be done, the scope of work. And we know that because, like Joe just clarified, there were more than one company that knows construction. Going into that estimate and saying, yep, this is the number, this is what you need to go out for for bonds.
The price per square foot we've compared with others.
And we've.
We have.
We've had it. We've done what now?
The price per square foot, what we're being charged per square foot, that is something you compare.
Not being charged anything per square foot, because we haven't gone out to bid. But, but that's the point is, it's not up to us at this point what it's going to cost per square foot. That's up to the actual contractors. That will submit bids under the public bidding process. Is all set. There's nothing we can do to change that process. So that's when we get our comparisons. That's when we say. As a board, again, we have a vote on it. Do we accept this?
Right.
Do we roll the dice and go out for bids again? That's where you get the comparison. This estimate being used as like a, we need a competitive estimate. I just don't get that, because it's not what it's for.
That's the thing, is again, it's this gaslighting goal. Oh, I've never heard of this. The city council does that. They, they interview design. Our, you know, architects and engineers, every time they have a project, they interview multiple, they have them bring their scope of the work and proposal. This is all prior to approving it. These are normal steps that people take, that, that governing bodies take. So this whole, oh, Emily, I have no idea what you're talking about. That's the, the song and dance that I'm. Having a really hard time getting beyond here because this isn't, this is common sense. These aren't irregular questions. These aren't irregular things to do when you're looking at doing due diligence. So it, again, it's just the fact to, what are you possibly talking about? This is crazy. Well, no, it's not. This is stuff that people do, that governing bodies do all the time.
You're right, and school districts do it all the time, but it's also a common practice, like a situation we're in, where we've had. Recent large construction projects, and we have an established relationship with companies that, that have done great work for us as consultants. Who continue to use that. I mean, that's right in the Minnesota Department of Ed manual on large construction projects is. Sure, you can go through and interview everybody, or if you already have an established relationship, stick with it. We are sticking with it, and this, I mean, this goes back though to the. What are we trying to say? If we're going to go out and request for a proposal for architect, construction management. We will. Delay the project by several months. And we will never get that line item to be low enough to offset the added cost on the bottom line. That includes this construction inflation, which now, if we go to public vote, we're being told it's two years worth of construction inflation. That's.
Is this anything new that, that I'm asking for, though, or talking about? It's like, it's new. I mean, have we had months where this could have been done? Leading up to this, but it's just this continued brick wall of, nope, it's the one, it's the only one. We're not going to make any concessions. We are not going to do anything different. We are just going to follow forward. In that bit. I mean, again, yes, that would be months worth, but we also had months in which the same question has been asked.
So I.
Go ahead.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
Um. What other buildings in the next five to ten years have to have? HVAC or indoor air quality addressed? I'm looking at you because I feel like you would maybe help go.
Jesse. But not, none to this extent.
Well, not to the extent, so different than that.
Look, every building that has an HVAC system has things that are constantly being, you know, to be addressed to some extent, right? The largest ones will have to deal with at some point are probably the middle school, and those are areas where you can say. Let's say we've got fifteen air handlers, I have no idea. You can replace them on a one-by-one basis, plug and play that through my, our year-to-year LTFM. Budget that we get without having to take the ceiling tiles out and everything above it and got that whole system to. So those, that's not a, gotten replaced the entire system because it's. You know. Sixty years old, fifty-five years old, um it's replace unit per unit as needed, and doing that throughout our. Throughout our LTFM.
But it sounds like there's issues with. Temperature in that building as well. So are, there's parts of that building that don't have that right?
We run in issues time to time where we have to look at the. Oh, yeah. Did Jesse had deals and issues of temperature on a day-to-day basis in a given building, when you, you know, when you're.
Well, and if that's going to happen anywhere, I guess what, where I'm going with this is. Is there a way, and I know I asked this before, is there a way that we could look at tying in? The needs that would need to be addressed within the next five, five years-ish? To this one, can you have more than just one building tied into the LTFM?
Not to the extent, not under this funding mechanism, the way I understand it, because we don't need to make those changes to improve the air quality. Okay, and then go in. It's not, I, it's not an indoor air equality issue. It's a maintenance issue for specific pieces of that that are replaceable over time and not a. Um total, you know, issue with the system.
Well, we have fun set aside for those.
Right. We have, yeah, mechanical replacements that happen through all, through all.
Um, Jason, when you're talking about the ten years, you know, it was phase one, phase two. What was the plan of the stadium and the HVAC? In ten years when we get to phase two, was that going to be, was the intention for that to be another referendum, but together? As one, or as two different questions, but on one, one referendum.
Uh, no, not two. I, well, again, we. Yeah, they were, they were parking lot, I mean, put them in the parking lot. I would not recommend to put them separate.
Yeah.
For obvious reasons.
So that was the intention with the HVAC and the stadium at that time.
So Joe, do we have a, a air quality test of that compares all the schools to see how out of balance River View is versus? All the other ones?
We have indoor air quality assessments that are done annually in each building.
Right, okay, how, how?
So basically, just. They don't. They measure airflow in each classroom. They don't necessarily measure how out of balance or your ability to control the temperature, does that make sense? Just kind of a snapshot.
So you're getting less airflow, which is. Getting us the humidity by ceiling tiles or through it.
Correct.
I kind of want to go back to Emily's comment about the brick wall. I guess I kind of feel differently. I feel like we. Very good, I'll speak for myself. I feel like it's been answered in the fact that we have said that, yes, there is only one estimate. We don't get to look and compare until we actually. Formally say yes, and then we'll get bid, and then we have the opportunity to say no. So I guess I don't really understand why we need more estimates when we still have the full opportunity to say. Yeah, no, I don't want to go with this person. I don't like their bid. I don't like what they're including. I don't like all the, all the line items that they're giving. And we still have that option as a board to say no. In the future, once we've gotten bids, then we can, we can take that risk and go out for another round of bids. We can just say. No at that point, but I just, I feel like at this point, it's. I don't feel like that could be a brick wall. I feel like it's. This is just another step. Like, if we want to get to that bid process, this is the first step to get there. And I guess that's the way I have interpreted it, and maybe that's just a different interpretation, but. I look at it, this is our first step to say that, yes, we're going to do this project, and okay, then, you know, the next step, we're going to look at all these things we can compare. We can tell the public. Okay, this is, this is what's going on. These are how, like, everyone's able to see all that stuff. And like, to me, that, that's reassuring to me too, to vote tonight and say, like, let's move forward. And get to that process, let's see what we can do.
If, but if we vote the sale of the nineteen point six million in bonds, we are approving the funding source of. This, there will not be community input, there will not be a referendum, there would not be any of that. We are approving the sale of the bonds at nineteen point six million. So we aren't just approving the project in itself, we are approving the way in which we are funding the project. And that I think has been, uh, yeah, one of the points of contention is. Is that how we're all.
I do want to add one thing, and that is the original facilities planning team was facilitated by Cunningham Architects, a third firm. And they were the ones who identified this project originally and set the original cost. Right, and working by whatever it was back in two thousand fifteen.
Yeah.
So I just want to point that out that there have been multiple eyes on this, Cunningham. Um Bradford, uh, or it's Bradford, I think, um ICS, um and Design Tree. So there have been four different sets of professional eyes on this. To give us our estimate. Again, it is an estimate. Um, that's all of it.
If our bids come in lower, that money goes bracketed into.
If it's on our, our debt service.
Yeah, we can't spend it anywhere else. So if we go up for nineteen point six in bonds and it miraculously costs sixteen million, we just pay down the debt on this project. We can't use it somewhere else. Alright, um I'm, I'm going to call for a vote.
Can I make it a roll call vote?
Yes, it has to be, yes.
Has to be.
I guess. Okay. Um Jen.
No.
Scott?
No.
Jason?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Trisha?
Yes.
Emily?
No.
Okay, resolution fails three to three. Moving on to. Discussion items, review of policies. Okay, discussion, uh policies for eighteen, five oh six, five oh nine, five ten point one, five point four, seven oh nine, seven ten. And nine oh three, first reading, any discussions? Second discussion item, uh like I said, there's a facilities and operations committee meeting uh this coming Monday. October thirtieth, District Service Center, one o'clock P M. Um I think we're going to have Joe in attendance with us and Rich Plamson, our activities director, in addition to the uh board members and. Future board work session, uh Wednesday, November first, two thousand twenty-three, District Service Center, five thirty P M. Uh at that work session, I've invited um Erin Dorman, who is our executive director of the Benton Stearns Education District. Um, that's our special ed conglomerate with five other area districts. She is going to basically. Give us a Benton Stearns one-on-one uh. Education into what they do. I, I understand, and it's before my time on the board that they typically used to do this uh pretty regularly, which. What I've learned sitting on that board in the past few months has been invaluable and very, very interesting. So I'm looking forward to having her visit with us. Um. Yeah, and then we talked tonight about um Trisha's resolution regarding the SRO. Statutes and MSBA's efforts to uh get some law thing done on that, so we'll discuss that as well, and probably one or two other items.
And Trisha, you said you'd send that out, right, today or tomorrow or whatever, Thursday or Friday?
Thank you. Uh then, next up, um we have. Our first session with Barb Dorn about the superintendent hiring process. We are going through a workshop. Uh that MSBA puts on called Hiring the Right Superintendent, that will be Thursday, November sixteenth, at the District Service Center at five thirty P M. And that is technically a work session. Next regular board meeting, we'll be back at District Center, uh Monday, November twentieth, six thirty to P M. With that. I will ask for the motion to adjourn.
Oh, oh, can I ask when your meeting was going to be? Do you know when this?
Uh, I, I have to look at my calendar. Oh.
Oh, no, yeah.
November nine?
It's on Friday.
There's a community advisory meeting.
The one with.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh November eighth, November eighth. Uh Wednesday, then Wednesday.
Thank you.
And then. An operation of these. Is next. That was community advisory?
Yes.
It's Friday, Monday.
Yeah.
Then it was communications. Committee? Got it, yeah, not a, not a committee, not. Okay. Okay, back to. Motion to adjourn. So. My Jason, second my Jen, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
They both say nay.